Yeah, it's just the three.
This is a working session of the planning board. We will not be making any decisions, but simply be um. Making recommendations back to the full board to discuss tomorrow night. Um, purposes to talk about um how meeting uh communications plan. And we have three specific things we want to talk about. The first is uh proposed cricket article topics. Second is this table for the website that finalized. And third. And um the third is to discuss the plan for the October twelve open house. So. Um. Should we start with cricket articles? I know you thought about this.
I have thought about it.
Article number three.
Article three and four, I think we should discuss discussing topics. So it well, I think we should actually do talk about three, four and five, three being simply a very short. One tomorrow that reminds people of the open house.
Who's going to write?
I am.
Oh, you're gonna write.
Well, reminding people as you submit, you know, open house. So.
Okay, that's a great.
Okay. So tomorrow Sarah, I can do that. Reminders. Okay.
Okay, so I have, I have a proposed letter from the meetings. But I would like to have the planning board. Take a look at it. And I think it's been buzzing around for a while, but it's called property owner rights label release. And it's a discussion about what is by right and what's not and. And how to negotiate with that. And it doesn't make any um. Suggestion or recommendation, just kind of lays out the issue. So I don't know if you do it exactly, but I don't want to break off.
Go ahead and summarize the issues.
Sure.
Oh, hold on a second. Nine, seven, eight, eight oh eight, uh, and then in two nine five six, can you hear us? This is the working session of planning board, so it'd be nice to know who you are if you're willing to tell us. You're on mute. Oh, you know what? It's my phone number. It's me, Jordan Beck. No, I don't think so.
Um, this.
Okay, sorry. So, okay, go ahead and summarize your topics.
So, uh, okay, so cricket article. The second paragraph says, we're, we are all somebody's neighbor and we all are looking out for our own interests. Well, there's a question. Uh, of 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 balance between the rights of the property or whether it's concerned. In reviewing public comments by changes to the zoning regulations being proposed by the planning board, there is a consented law for the limit. Were prohibited by right development. Concerned is that property owners can build whatever they want, neighbors will use the opportunity to challenge. Really to appeal permits for the actual problems, in the large or small. Uh, there is even a period that allowing any by right development will inevitably end up in some kind of. Confrontation with friends that were along with them. Then there's probably a discussion of all those that by right, which is. Uh, sort of getting rolling, remember, but everybody knowing that same thing. So what should you do by right to Manchester? It's still being your lot compliance with building district regulations and your constructed building component and local property requirements. Property owner or nobody has right to own a house, construct an additionally existing house. Cut down trees, move free and practicals of earth. If you're trying to get a number of activities, you're only going to go to the maintenance. Paint your house every time you want, you can add fences. You can have anyone stay there as long as you want. You can operate alone in your own little business. So the way you don't create public nuisance or change the use of your property, so doing your business residents, you can do your work for want. Isn't it that I don't get me rolling on a firm believer in the original put in review of a developer proposal that will have an actual measurable meaningful impact unless you're under there. Because the tricky balance, so whose rights should prevail and property owner trying to use their property to accommodate this lifestyle. Then that was situation, trying to make investment, the lay of the land, it would be a buyer from the. Prevent. Receive damage even with how you already built the property. Or the general public trying to. Sustain or approve of vital community. Can property owner be required to endure the expense of time needed to inspect the product for a project that meets all the intensive zoning regulations? Uh, should involve here more members that spend their effective time considering one of these incorrect rental projects. A table has the right to objection even or even veto or reason why they've planned that they don't even want. If you can decide what reasonable is the land heading is. There's no perfect solution. Every three year time is pretty everyone's own rules. If you are a perfectly advanced community, there will be a community exception, a commonly accepted, shadows, learning regulations. But unfortunately, the ideal of zoning regulations is just to be drafted. Now these complicated issues end up being filled in the court of law, and even then the decision often is a victory. Our design of viola Manchester far from ideal, while we won't be able to make it perfectly controlled, make it better by clarifying the rules, adding specific definitions. Making review process more understandable. There's a specific standard upon the surveying development process. From the record, we will sell proposals in the case of allowing the fire rate developments.
Why would that be a letter and not just tell the laws?
Good, because we'll be happy that it's continued.
I think I would just say that the take make notes, save I.
Oh, yeah, I could, yeah, sure.
I agree.
Okay.
I don't think it should come from the board, is that what you're saying?
No, I think it, I think it's not. You think it should have a rest?
I I want to see what the board was trying, but. It's. It's a. It's sort of a piece, I don't know, it will, it's it's not educating the public on what we're doing, it's it's kind of indicating that, you know, there's a big. Takeaway of. Neighbor input by what we're doing, which I don't think. It's the case. Well, anyway, I I would think. I mean, I like it. I like it. I like it. It's informative nature. I think the board. I think we can bring it up to the board tomorrow and see what.
I'd be happy to do it anyway.
So I guess my only concern about individual board members sending letters at this juncture is that the one does. And we all may jump on that bandwagon and whether that's. The best.
Well, maybe is is that.
And does this further?
Is is that better? If that's better, um, what we're trying to accomplish than maybe being more educational with our use of letters to the cricket, I don't.
Well, I think that um.
Especially with more of a controversial ones, but that's just. Controversial items that we like. So. Fine with it, um. I don't know.
My, I just, we don't have policies and procedures right now, so. That's if we did, yeah, that goes back, right? But if. If every planning board writes a letter, or even a member writes a letter. Which certainly anybody's right to do, but. Um, I guess I'd rather have us have a cohesive. Um. Set of communications.
That's understandable.
That's just my idea. I just like, I have a sense of, I'd like to ask, I mean. So that's, that's my concern, not about it being a letter from one person, because I think it then. Potentially. You know, we don't have, we don't have a hundred percent vote on every article, and therefore, everybody can weigh in on their. I think we look disjointed and fractured. So, so I think that the letter can is useful because it does. Indicate that you can do certain things by right, and then it also, I think maybe we just um frame it at the last paragraph to the. Zoning, specific zoning changes that we have here, which is. Um. The proposed zoning changes. Still give in all cases except perhaps except the ADU case, still give neighbors the.
Yeah.
The input. That's. That's the point, is that the input is still the same unless the unless. Specific criteria are met, and those criteria are already the basis for either special permit decisions. So in the case of curb cuts, if you meet the criteria. We would approve it anyway. I mean, we would have to approve it anyway, because we assumed if we don't approve something that meets the criteria. So, so the point of the article really is that our zoning change, proposed zoning changes do not. Actually affect. With the exception of the ADU, maybe we should say that out of the proposed ADU, do not affect. Um, the neighbors' input into the special permit process as one. As one input into special permit process.
Yeah, I mean, there's another side, but the other side of that code, which is there are a lot of things people can do. To upset their religion and have by right.
Yeah, and that's, that's a true statement. I can paint my house, or paint hokadots.
I can put my car on dirt. In my house, right around.
In front of the roof.
Right. Right, and I can have dog in my car all day long. Or.
Well, do we need, do we need to say this?
I don't want to.
I think it's, I think it's.
Yeah, I think we do, you just.
Yeah, I do too. I think it's a good thing to say because. Um. Yeah, I think it's what, I think that what can I do with my lot? And what can I do, what can I say about, what input do I have? When my neighbors do something.
Yeah.
And maybe that's the frame is, and the fact of the matter is you have no say if they comply with all the zoning. And in some cases, you have. Some say if they don't comply with zones and are subject to a special permit.
Yeah. And in fact, anything with the exception of you doing twenty ADUs.
Right.
They're not proposing anything that's going to allow anyone to do anything.
Anything different, but but input is is a. Uh, is input, it's not a decisive, it's it's not a decision about, so. So I think that's, I think that that helps.
All right, uh, uh, so let's do this. Let's uh propose to the board tomorrow.
Can I read practice and make the word from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to.
And how do I?
So let's put it back to the process, so um. Um, you know, we we. Again, we we'd let the board decide that, yes, we'd like to, you can talk about it tomorrow with the full board. Full board okay's it, you post it tomorrow night, have the board to review. Uh, the board will discuss any changes at next Monday's meeting, it was three public hearings, uh, we'll try to squeeze that in. And uh, we'll, we'll run with the uh, with the comments, we'll go over the comments, and uh, we'll rule whether we want to do it or not. We voted or not.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, if it's violated, and we. Not everyone's in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, that's good. Okay, so.
That's critical, uh, let's cricket article three, uh, can we have any um. You know, kind of drafts for four, five and six, I assume one of.
We said, we said we're only going to do four.
Okay.
We have to do more than that, that was, but. Um.
Do we want to do the more, at at some point, we're gonna have to delve into. The more controversial one, correct?
Well, no, I think we have to um explain the changes of the um. The three. Um. Three controversial ones, the the RCC.
RCC, the three houses.
Yes, three housing lots. How about we, how about we call three housing. Articles for town, housing. Related articles.
I started writing, I started writing the draft already, which we're not, because it's been used by the board.
And then. The other one is nonconforming uses, you kind of saw that.
Yes, you want to talk about nonconforming uses?
Sure.
Did we, were we going to get our opinion on that?
So. Uh, it's, we'll talk about tomorrow. I can send the, um, as we agreed, I I sent the um, uh, articles. Some, a subset of our total articles to town council.
Okay, interesting.
Maybe then I'll talk to her.
All right, I would like to read you the nonconforming. Oh, regulation, it's in the one five five, it's not, it's just.
Oh, wait, what section are we at? Six point nine?
Six point one point two.
That's all there is, isn't it now?
Yeah, uh, yeah, well, there's a bunch of stuff, but the only thing that we're talking just to.
Yeah.
Changes, extensions, alterations. Nonconforming structure or use, maybe changed, extended or altered. Behind in their new case of what reveals grants a special permit. Therefore, if the planning such. Change, extension or alteration is not substantially in order to allow or injure us. In the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure use. The above requirement does not apply to such an extension, alteration, leak of structure. For structural needs to a single family or two family residential structure that does not include the nonconforming. Nature of the. Structure. So we're already.
I mean, we already have this.
Yeah, so what are we doing?
This is where we will need some kind of legal, uh, I thought it was based on uh, state, um.
Case law.
Case law.
Hundred kids, which I think clarified. I mean, the idea of the proposed regulation goes into much more detail about what's allowed and what's not, but the big, this is pretty broad, this allows anybody to do anything they want. Especially, as long as they don't extend or alter a nonconformist. It makes it worse to this.
Literally the same language.
This may be, I think I asked the board maybe to draw a little more browsing on this.
And I think we asked town council, so.
I think, wow.
Um.
Well, we'll just.
Whatever.
So is town council looking at this specifically?
Yeah, I sent them a, I sent them, asked them to specifically look at the case law and.
Okay.
The only thing that we've added though is the sort of the minimalist changes. The permissible change in the following, we did add that section.
Yeah, yes.
Because the permits, the new section seven point five point one has permission for changes. All right, we're going to have to take this up really tomorrow night, so.
Okay.
But then, just had the cricket article.
But I agree, girl, but I, my thought would be to. Have a joint partnership of someone from the planning board, or I mean, me and Sarah Melch.
Great idea.
I'm not approaching them. I think it would be interesting to.
Well, they hear all these things.
Yeah, of course.
That's really interesting. Interesting, we remember the section. Why, I don't understand why town council people know a lot of them.
Yeah, that's what I've been saying to you.
That would be a question to ask Sarah, but it was a change of use.
No, a nonconforming structure.
But it was more nonconforming, maybe you bet.
May be changed, extended or altered, so it would be changed. After finding that such change, extension or alteration is not substantially more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood. In the existing nonconformity, nonconforming structure or use. So perhaps the, there was a, maybe there was a finding that it was more injurious.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know, um. So.
With the corner in. Why do we change that in residential?
Well, it kind of surprised me because I started off with this thinking that every change to any nonconform use that would be. Is a special permit, and it happened to my own house, so I know this. And it's silent in this language, it's not like I did that together.
Right.
I don't want my money, but.
We're missing something.
Yeah, I think we are.
Well, maybe that, I was like, there's abandonments in here.
Yeah.
Hmm.
There's rat tracing, and there are slightly changed, I don't really like this, but the legal question.
Maybe we just want to add this, some of the changes.
Hmm.
Hmm. All right, you know what we could do is we should lay them literally side by side. With like. Which might, I'll, I'll.
We'd have to, you know, I would have to do out the Mabrowski, yeah.
This is Mabrowski.
Oh, yeah, this is good English, yeah.
Okay. So in terms of communicating about section seven.
You may want to touch base with Stu also as to what this was about, I think she was involved with this.
So, so maybe to to sort of back to cricket article question. The cricket article, nonconforming uses. Might be um a fifth cricket article to be written by.
Sure.
I like that. Um. Okay. All right, good, so then, so we have.
Sir, I'm going to do it.
Right, all right, let's um. I'm going to lay those two things. Okay. Um. All right, so those are three cricket articles. It brings us right to.
Well, uh, yeah, one more thing we're talking about.
Yeah.
Which is the zoning impact study that we put together. And people keep. Counting us for impacts on it, I'm also, I'm just clear about the results. It could be what I wrote, I can't remember how I was. And other people can like their. Conclusions underneath of their something, comments.
I think the problem with it as it's written, that some, if you get rid of the opinion.
I tried to remove most of it. And I didn't.
Not here, finish that. About it.
I tried to make it more.
More generic.
Generic.
All right, can we, can we discuss that tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, so you need to send that me the latest, and I'll put them up on the. Um.
I'll send that to you.
Okay. Um, send them to me and I'll put them up on our website and we'll, I mean, on our.
I envision having something like this at a workshop. Kind of documentation of impacts, we get it.
It is a good idea.
Okay, so.
I hope it's on a full core board, is it?
No, we have this, we have this table, which is really index, let's jump to the table, okay?
Okay. Okay.
Will we do that?
Yeah.
This is really a, so I think this is probably, uh, well, let's jump to the workshop, because this is related to. Well, come to the table.
Okay, I think one before um, we go to the table, um. There is one thing we haven't really revisited, and I assume we're doing that tomorrow, is the um clusters.
Yeah.
Yeah, cluster.
Yes.
Is that in any documentation or cricket articles, or we?
Well, yeah, we said we're going to have three housing.
We're going to lay it on the board.
Yeah.
So, but whatever cluster we come up with, it may may not be.
Well, it's really just changing the couple of, I think, the size of the cluster and increasingly the affordability component, because really the two big changes to it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
And then senior housing is to allow them with special permit.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the third one is to, uh, ADUs is to have a very small ones by right up to twenty and.
Or some my special first.
Yeah, unless we take up the amendments to the rest, which we also.
So there is the idea of actually breaking into two pieces. And the first piece, which would require testers, would allow, pick a root wall of garbage that's some existing bio, just and you can affect it from it. And then the second. One would be to allow between the. Right, and that's only requires in.
Fifty.
Majority of lots of them.
Two articles on it.
Okay. Going to propose that.
Yeah, it's in the options that we have, but we haven't got to. Okay, so let's look at, look at this table, I think.
Table, okay.
I can read it. Uh, it's not perfect, but.
It has the number one fifty, the lady.
Yeah.
Yes, well, yeah.
You know, what I did in my head is subject.
Yes, I think. I think we should, uh, I mean, we should recommend to the board, I would move it forward. To um, two things, one is to go update the website, it's pretty similar to what's already on the website.
Yeah, it's pretty similar.
But um.
Has the board seen this?
Yeah, we passed out last time, okay. Twice we've passed it up.
This morning.
Yes. But, I'll. Um.
Okay, so we've seen this, go to profits, why do you just want to move it forward?
Yeah, so I think anybody object to us recommending to move it forward.
And then.
So I'm thinking when I was here, so okay, is that best? Um, recommend, anybody object to that? And you're like, move forward.
Let me see that goes to when, um.
Um, as it stands, and I think if people have. Things over time, we can. Um, we haven't heard any comments. Okay. So the third thing is, um.
Like to push this also at the same time through the workshop if we could, if we could.
Yes, I think of the handout, the workshop.
Good, something like this.
Right. Right.
It's too, I guess, it's too much to put on a big board, but.
Can we have?
Let's talk.
A little bit more.
Well, go ahead.
So, uh, I wonder, uh, for example, all these articles that they will also hand out.
We have a week.
We've got a whole lot of paper.
A lot.
I think it's a lot. I think we'll have a week to get them done, so, and edited and all the rest.
Yeah, well, I think what's a good model.
I think less is more. People, people will.
All right, it's a problem, I mean, it's going to be a lot of work.
I think it's. Um, okay, so the workshop is going to be, um. On. Our week, April twelfth, a week from our. Probably about.
Um.
Hopefully this plant, this uh, coast guard is hitting this week, I tried to confirm that. But. It's.
We should announce at every meet, you know, one hour of meetings that we're doing this, which is actually one meeting.
Yeah, every meeting, yeah. Right. Right, so anybody, uh, it's like we have one.
We have the eleventh, and we have this tomorrow, so we have two meetings to announce it again.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
And we, and there's going to be social media, um, to announce, and Tiffany asked me why don't, you know, what she wanted, what was the message? So I said, wait, because we're talking about how it's going to be format, how we're going to, what the format's going to be. Um, so I thought it'd be useful to start with what we want to.
Well, cricket should say something.
Yeah, that's cool, I'll also.
Okay.
So, open house, so, uh, my suggestion is we start with what do we want to achieve? And then we think about, um, format. So, um. I thought we would look at goals, and that was, I think we want to develop, um. My thoughts were develop an understanding of the proposed zoning articles, but also understand, give people an opportunity to understand zoning better.
Mm-hmm.
Um, answer questions and build trust in us and, um. You know, as well as have conversations.
So you're talking about a presentation in the beginning of this thing?
Well, not necessarily, I'm thinking, I'm, yeah, so that's the first, so the goals, I think, is to develop understanding among the attendees of and support for. Our zoning articles. That's to me, and we do that through questions, through, I need to know us, so.
Mm-hmm.
So in terms of, um. Format. Um. Uh.
I thought we would have maybe planning board members kind of with the public and kind of, you know. If somebody has a certain question on somebody that planning board member is an expert on. Not everybody knows everything about everything, and I'm the first to admit it, you know, it's really.
Right.
So if somebody had a question on ADUs. So if somebody had a question on ADUs, maybe they could go to you or Gary or somebody who was there. Let's see. And.
Yeah, I think so too. So what?
It's like a lot of kind of a.
A lot of.
Yeah, that's what I kind of envisioned, and I don't know, you know, the board or everyone, the visions, that's.
I think it's more here to talk.
So, so I was, I was thinking about the master planner, the little visioning thing where there are different clusters of people on different topics and you could go between one and the other.
I was thinking, yes.
So there could be a housing part, there could be a non-conforming uses thing, there could be a.
Definitions.
Definitions thing. It could be a table, explain a table could be one, I don't know.
I assume the table is pretty useful because it tells you what you can do from there. And then zoning map. Where's my house? Or that could be interactive because the zoning map now has all those there's.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
So it seems to me that if you do a drop-in format, the advantage is that people who only have ten minutes can come and get a question answered and then leave, or who can't come at seven, but can come at seven thirty can still come. But the messaging we have put out to date have in, has applied and it starts at seven and therefore, so that either messaging could be changed that it's a drop-in.
Yeah.
And like the, the signs could say, planning board forum, drop-in, seven to eight thirty. Forum, uh, open house, whatever, um.
And, and, and maybe we would have some documentation, you know, you know, divided up by a, a section someone had a question on, maybe we should have our zoning map around, uh, uh, upon a board, a colored one. Maybe some people don't go zones, um. We're not really changing.
We're not changing anything, but people don't necessarily know what's on there. So.
Yeah.
I think that's.
Maybe kind of a fun thing, find your heads.
Right, so we have that on a computer.
So we could, we could have a computer like this.
I have, I mean, I have a screen property.
Well, you don't, we tried to get in high school there and try to do something.
No, we didn't have to bring everything. We're gonna leave everything. It's in the, it's in the, and in the cafeteria.
And is there media available?
There's internet. I mean, we could just bring my computer and put it on a screen.
Yeah, should we?
Put it on it like just to, I mean, I have a big screen set.
Yeah, there's kind of public video, you know, the media notes and.
I think that depends.
No. I, I don't think it's public.
No.
I don't think we have to take it far.
No, I don't think so.
Well, I think it's planning board members, I hope everyone attends, but.
Yeah, so if we had stage, my thought was if we had stations. I think the zoning map is a good one. I was thinking that one, what that might be interesting is when people walk in is one that's, uh, just a poster that says meet the planning board. And says, you know, um, like a picture with your name and, you know, you're a, you're a PE, work on. I don't know.
You're tough to make up in such a short time to get everyone's.
I think, I mean, it shouldn't be that hard. Everybody just fills out a quick questionnaire about what your um, professional experience is, how long you've lived in town and how long you've been on the planning board and something like that, you know, um, but I think people, it would be useful to people to know, we have a PE, we have a registered landscape architect, we have a area.
City planner.
City planner.
Which is the most.
I have a job, I have a master in the water resources and planning.
That's useful.
Um, I've served on planning boards for, I don't know, so many years. I mean, I think it's, uh,
Yeah.
useful for people to know. People don't know, necessarily know that about us.
It's a big mistake.
So I thought that would be a useful.
I just don't know about logistics and getting.
Well, I think we're just, I mean, they're not gonna look like highly produced. If you think of a PowerPoint, I think you do in PowerPoint, everybody just fills out on SharePoint. Put, put a quick picture and then just format, I'll make it up and then people can just type their stuff in tomorrow night or whenever. We print them out in color and little.
So you'll send out a question to me at once?
Yeah, I'll, yeah.
And I can, Jade, I can, you know, we call it a victory and it's.
Good job. Yeah.
Uh, every day, that's our ability, but yeah, okay.
You can take it with your comment, I mean.
That's true.
Um.
Okay.
Uh, wait. Sorry. Um, so that was one thought I had because people, we're people, we live in town, we care, we we have professional lives, um.
But that is before you.
Yeah. And then, then what I, the zoning map stations, um. Um.
So we're talking about these stations.
Stations, right, and topics and who, and how they're gonna. Um, so there's two ways, seems to me there are two ways to, to divide stations. One is by topic and one is by actually zoning change, which is sort of tedious.
Yeah.
But, um, or major zoning change because most most of the zoning changes are actually quite minor.
Can we still, can we use this table as part of this station?
We don't have a general bylaw changes on that, which which is another issue, but, but which it could be added or it could be. Um, but.
You're already current.
Yeah, I mean, it.
So you have.
Oh, right.
Section circuit is not over?
No, it's. Oh yeah, moving some regulations to general bylaws.
Mm-hmm.
These could be our stations, maybe. I mean, we'd have to double up on, on stations.
Well, like one through four is pretty simple.
Okay.
I mean, the zoning map is districts.
Well.
Right?
Well.
Nobody, I mean, if people want that, then we can post the definitions. I mean, that's a pretty easy thing just to or have them handouts.
Yeah, I guess.
Well, we need the zoning handouts, it's a table. And we need all of these zoning changes, we need several copies of them, zoning changes. You need packets of them. Why not?
Are you talking about the whole do?
The whole thing.
The whole bylaw then, or just the?
Oh, some of it. I don't know, that's what people are gonna be voting on.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should have those.
Can't go away.
Obviously not. I don't know.
Forget your law.
Not their laws. And that's okay, um. We're close. Okay. It's really just a.
So the meeting is tomorrow, so we have Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, and all this.
And Monday.
Wednesday.
Provided people have time, right?
I have, I can do Monday, I can. It's a whole.
It's not home, it is.
We cut the site.
I work on site. So, oh. Go ahead. Okay, so here. Uh, okay, so my own thoughts to take. So, um.
Could we do a.
Yeah, well, here's what I'm thinking. I have a thought about it, I know. Well.
Well, we would need a projector or a TV or.
Well, that's what I wondered, whether we could get our hands.
I want to talk to Stu tomorrow and I can see what he thinks. You guys think it's worth, well.
Now, here's what I'm thinking, it's not PowerPoint, it's PowerPoint definitely. But I can't project, um. So.
We can see your screen.
No way, I gotta carry.
Just make yourself colors. Click on your three dots. Go to your A and click on your, uh, and then make colors, right? Or no, click on the.
Make a house.
Yeah. Good.
So this is the PowerPoint that I converted for town meeting. Um, which is a version of the, um. Okay. So I'm thinking that this is um, that these could be printed out on posters, you know, on, in just in eight and five eleven, nothing terribly fancy. We don't necessarily need that, but Article one replaces section four, one through four, that's it. And actually, I can take, we could take this stuff and put it there, but it's kind of the same.
Yes.
Um, and section two.
Yeah, I think so too.
Uh, section three and section four, so there's Article one.
Yeah.
Zoning map we will have in an interactive format. The table, we can actually just print the whole table out. We don't have to use, uh, this is just a.
You know, um.
We can just print the table.
I'll be, I'll be in my office, um, Thursday.
Oh, can you print the table on a big screen?
I have, we have a big plotter.
Oh, that would be awesome.
That would be really cool.
Just for, at least the table.
That would be really cool.
I'll need the, um, I'll need the native file.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, of course. So then table, this table of uses. Uh, so many people, I don't know that we need to get into that one too much, because that's why I wasn't doing it. So Article two moves to the general bylaws. Um, articles, I, I don't know these, this, but this is I don't know where.
Do I go by section or by article?
I think that the poster should be by article. Because that's what people are voting on, but, but that's questions. I mean, it doesn't, maybe we even don't even, we don't even do this. Say. Well, I mean.
We need, we, we need to, you know.
Anyway.
Can't hold back on it, we can't hide anything.
We're not hiding it.
Okay, but we say we don't need to do it, we say.
No, I just, this, what was, it's funny, rules.
Okay.
But can be condensed. Um. But this is pretty much the same. I mean, or, or maybe we just take the language because we've massaged this one, it's the same.
Like someone's gotta, you gotta coordinate this to this.
Right.
It's been changed.
I mean, I mean, this needs some work, but Sue did take us to have a, um. At this one, I mean, this is what the article is. And then we have.
I assume Sue will be at this.
Yeah. So I'm thinking if we just printed these out, made, made amendments to these and printed this is.
Yeah. You mean in a, uh, packet, paper packet?
No, I'm thinking as a public, that, well, this is too many of them, but.
Well, this is pretty good, this cluster is good.
Um. So. I mean, this is what we did for the public hearing, we've kind of forgotten that we did all this work for the public hearing.
Yeah.
But here's. So I, I think we don't need the, this section, but this table is useful. We have that table and this table for residential preservation cluster.
Yeah.
And then, uh, this has some errors in it, um, but we can fix it.
Sure, you didn't explain how this is being transmitted to the public.
I would put it on posters.
Ah.
I would print them. Um.
What do you mean by posters and?
Meaning like on easel.
So we'd need like twenty easels. Oh, so you have four or five.
Work them on a wallpaper, yeah, or something, perhaps several on the same.
Just take them to the wall.
We have twelve articles.
Yeah, okay.
And, um.
Okay.
Some of them are pretty darn straightforward.
But the logistics, I'm just thinking.
And. Yeah, I have a quite, I'm thinking this could probably be printed on eleven by seventeen. This is not most reasonable, because this is a sample.
So you're taking the staples, not blowing up the.
Yeah. Exactly. But.
And then we should make this file available electronically if someone wants to go home and have it, I guess.
Well, it is electronically on, it's the, this is another.
Okay, okay, that's right, that's right.
So my thought was just to have these by pretty much have the work done.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm happy to, maybe tonight we can just kind of look through this and see which ones, how we would pair this down. Um, I think it, and then if we have the articles, the material for the articles, then the topics could group the articles. So we have administrative. Then we have six and, six and twelve, which is special permits. And then we have housing. And then we have non-conforming use.
So can we have a special website just where the workshops will do, people can't go and just let's see our, you know, the different materials or something. Wouldn't be any explanation when we receive them. Now, the thing with all the planning board members and have the all these different articles.
They're good. We do them all on a PowerPoint, then it's, that's super easy to just.
Yeah, everything electronically we do, we should put it on an file, so we can get accessible. Should we have Bobrowski here at this thing?
Oh, that's another question.
I would like to get at least, at least a session before we have, before we go to Warren.
I, I agree, I, yeah, I think the board might not agree with that, but we'll see with the board.
Well, I would, I, the way I pose this is this, people are questioning. Here is the guy, he can answer them, so let's get him here and answer the question. I'm not sure the workshop is the right format, but.
Open house.
Open house.
Um, so when is the right forum for him? And that's a good question, um. And he said, it's not gonna be a town meeting, I would assume, we really kind of want that.
We have, the warrant has to be approved until October seventeenth.
It could be, so we will have. Oh, these are made changes on the town floor for the.
Yeah, we really don't want to do that.
Yeah.
We don't want to do that.
I think we're.
I think we're so close. I think the question is, um.
We want Bobrowski at our next zoning meeting.
Just trying. I think it might be better to ask specific questions of him. And really, the only ones we, only question we have is the non-conform use question.
I bet we have for an hour at our work, at our forum there and there's questions we can't answer, if you can answer them, then we can ask the questions, that's, that's something that.
Well, the other we can do is, we can also arrange our questions and send them to him, not even have to do them.
I mean, he has reviewed everything that we have.
He has, yeah. I mean, for example, I'd like to, I'd like to ask him a bunch of quick, like is it reasonable to have a butter sign that's saying for swing rules? Or is that gonna cause more trouble in this work?
It is gonna, well.
I did not, um.
Well, it's probably have more trouble with doing the question first, but I don't know.
Okay, can I make a suggestion that you, um, think up what questions we want to ask him for tomorrow night? We vote on having you talk to him for those questions.
Uh, okay.
It's about non-conforming uses, then about going forth, then about Mary actually asked a question that I didn't want to take any debate on email, but she did ask a question about section six to, two sections that she thinks are agenda.
Sure, that's there, we're going to that, uh, confluence, just to make sure she's on board.
Yeah.
Wherever she, I mean, whatever her issue is, I mean.
Well, I know, I understand her issues and, and I have a figure to say, you know, how non-conforming uses work.
Yeah, but why she, why are we making any change?
Uh, that's a good question, that's a good question.
I mean, that would take a big burden off our shoulder, that goes away.
I can, I can send this to.
Chris is going to list the work.
Well, can everybody ask questions?
Yeah, but you can start that one.
No, I'll start it.
Okay, and then.
Create it up to the board, right, hold the word, you can hear it and.
No, no, no.
Um, and then the first topic that you're gonna do is the Okay, and then Tuesday, I'll spend up the table.
There's another question, let's chase one.
Right, that's one of the big ones. I asked town council last.
I'm a little concerned about a forum tomorrow, I, I will think.
Okay, that's.
Laura, can I?
Okay, so can we just look at these slides for, let's make a recommendation for the forum for tonight.
Um.
I, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep them in edit mode, so. Um, the poster.
Can we get this thing closer?
Yeah. It just.
Right. Or.
I'm gonna go along and move with that.
No, you can, I think it's back because when you have a big group at the table.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Doesn't want to go in the street.
Maybe a lot.
I think that's good, Chris. Just turn a little, just got to turn it a little more to you, because I have my laptop. You need to sit.
No, it's.
Okay.
Hopefully I. Minimize.
Okay, so we're on slide one introduction.
Um, I don't think we need this introduction, except I would say, I would suggest that we have this introduction of planning board members.
So I guess we should have an announcement at the beginning.
Yeah, we should maybe every half hour, we'd say, you know, just to welcome you.
Anybody, and we do people listen.
Yeah.
I also think we should have some food. So. I'm gonna suggest that we not have all this stuff about zoning members, but we say. That this be a meet the planning board. And then we have a.
I can respond to Mr.
Joe Virg.
Yeah, on a picture or like.
Well, I'll just put a picture.
In Italy or something.
Okay, that's my suggestion. And then second. Article one would have. Um.
Look at the table at the same time, authority and purpose, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is Article One would have this and definitions, right?
Yeah, this Article One places section one through four, so section one is authority and purpose. Section two is.
Maybe you should have before you go right into Article One, you say Article One contains these many sections, and I'm just gonna go through them.
Well, I think again, these are posters that we're gonna, we'll cluster, so maybe I will.
So it's cleaned up, so they don't say, well, what's definitions? That's Article One, it says section two, I mean.
Right, right.
That's the, you know, that is a mess with this.
That's what? It's, yeah, articles and sections are, ugh.
What if there can be a uh a table that come that explains articles versus sections?
Or just at the beginning, Article One, these sections, or something, maybe, you know, just the way it's.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
The work rate.
That's actually on every, um. That could be on every poster. So Article One is section, uh you know, so it's a table that says.
Yeah, it's just a table.
Um.
Something.
So.
How about is some of your articles, eh, that slide has some of your sections?
Yeah, just like an outline.
Right, so Article One.
Out of outline and then indentation.
And then the sections are.
Inde- all indentations, and they sum up.
Yeah, it is.
And how about before, right before that, you said articles are. What's being proposed, it's not me, the sections are in section.
Right.
Yes, yes, yeah, a bit of an explanation.
Oh, you know what I can assume? Um. Um.
Because that's probably, that's probably not as good for a table, what you're doing here.
Chris, the like, um, sections of. No, I don't think so, but I can.
Pull the other things into the table. This should be ahead of the table.
Right. Right.
Or on every page, right, so like a header.
On it, I'm thinking of every, a header. Yeah, or just a sheet that we were repeat.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna put this right now, and say, repeat. This at every. Station. So, um. So I'm gonna say, open. So we're gonna have stations. We'll have a short intro. And we can repeat that. So I'll say, can I say drop in format? Um, intro. Welcome and orientation. It's, you know, repeat as needed. Be every half hour. Or add creators. Oh, you know what? We might get into a couple of readers.
What would you consider like, uh, people from on board will bring them in?
Right, no, but you know, maybe we can get a high school senior scientist, say, welcome, get that stations. Um, the planning board people are all wearing, we only need the food and the effects. A science sheet. That way, if people come and we've given some, you know, there's, let's say, we find an error in something we gave out. Then we would be able to contact people, say, you know what? We actually had the wrong. Something.
Should we have some sort of thing where people can either make comments or. Ask questions, written questions?
I think we're gonna do that one on one, they're.
Well, what if they can't, they don't have the opportunity to?
You can always write us through our email.
Against email, maybe, yeah, maybe.
But I am, I do like the argument, if a if a board member hears an idea from.
Yeah.
Someone. That.
When you write it down.
And that they would, yeah, and then bring it up.
Well, I got it, we have.
I assume we should, you know, wear some kind of dress as planning board members.
Yes.
Dress.
Well. Some sort of.
Oh, we want to do all we were.
Sort of, um.
Back to flex and like.
Like that type of corporate thing. But I mean, that's not mandatory, I'm just making it with. Hell. I mean, unless we go on sweatshirts and then.
I don't think we're gonna do that.
Sweatpants, I mean, that would be. I'm just, depending on what I heard from comment. Dress. I don't know.
I should send my ninety degree off at some of these nights.
I thought it just.
Yeah, okay, I think that's good thought. So then the first would be meet the planning board, so that would be seven. Seven slide, you know, uh, printouts.
Okay, we all be on one?
So.
Yeah, can we all be on?
Well, I think on one poster, I like, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm thinking.
With it.
The easiest way to do this is to put it all on PowerPoint, print it out on a color printer, and then put it on postboard.
Okay, that's a lot of work.
So. It's actually not that much work. It is, it is a lot of work, but. We we have to have.
Maybe ten.
We gotta, we gotta be careful.
I'm hoping that's. Um. Uh, so, uh, a photo. And then.
I'm gonna, I I think I will talk to Greg about having some town stamp a little bit on our.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
On on fall for the next week, month. Because we're gonna need some, uh, you know.
Yeah.
He's here, he's in the sink.
Yeah, they're gonna be. Okay, and then.
Now, do you want to say how long your background should be so?
I'm gonna give, uh, so I'm just like. I'm gonna send this out to everybody, say, I'll I'll do a, I'll do a sample.
But the background should be specific, you know, years in town, uh.
Yeah.
Licenses or or profession, you know, maybe some educate, I don't know.
Experience.
Years on the board, years in town. What I'd like to date, like, I wanna date myself in years.
Other boards.
Age, exactly.
Age, other boards.
Yeah. That'd be fine. Um. In fact, why not, uh, if you guys could both do this tonight or tomorrow morning, to to send me the samples so that we, I can format three of them and.
Good. I'll give it, I'll do it.
Yeah, just, okay, so handouts, we're gonna have the the table. And then the articles. We gotta have those. Packets. Because we need them at town. At the library and other places, anyway, so we gotta spend some paper.
Yeah.
Those are pretty much just about ready to go, so.
We have the uh, the code, the um, what's that QR code?
The QR code.
Available for scanning, uh, if someone wants it, or I just tell them it's available.
Uh, right. Good idea, um, I can, yeah, no.
No, I think it could be, it could be.
Right, um, how to find the article. Maybe instead of, um, we only need a few packets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of the QR codes.
Yeah. Okay, that's also on everybody's postcard.
Ah, yeah, and maybe I'll be the same.
I think it's. Yeah, that doesn't hurt, okay.
They have a video on the website, and then.
You won't have to come.
Yeah.
Should we video the whole web?
No. So before, okay, so on every article station, so what, then the station number one, I'm gonna suggest is. Um. Station. One, I'm, you know, I'm gonna do is, it'll be color coded. So. Station. So. Article one. Our station number one is gonna be.
Well, so then each, each section will be color coded and matched to.
Well, that's my, that's my, my.
That's kind of a.
Yeah.
So this one's gonna be just the zoning map.
Is this the zoning map that's, is this a different zoning map than the ones we have, um?
Yes, it's, it's a new one that was been, that's been done by Art G S, G I M.
So I might be able to print that out in color, a large, if I don't need it. I don't know, maybe then, would we want?
I think that might be better than the computer, yeah. So Sue will.
Right, so send me these two files.
I don't, I'll have to get that one from Sue, but, okay. Okay, when are you going to those?
Uh, Thursday, so I have a couple, just send me the native file to this and the um.
Okay.
The use table.
Yeah. So the use table. Okay, so.
And then on on the background for uh planning board members, you want me to just do that in Word and send it to you, or how would you want?
Send it to me in a.
Anyway, and then with a J P E T, with a picture?
Yeah.
So, Ron, when you print this.
We're gonna make a one, one large.
So but so it's gonna be a very skinny one.
Yeah. But this is all gonna be station one.
Well, that's a good point. I don't know how much, if it can all fit on one, one.
Well, you can print two pages, two big pages.
Okay.
Well, you have it there.
Is it all in one, it's, I assume it's one file where it's all in, where it's not broken up like this?
Correct, this is just a visual.
Okay.
So I'm gonna just put it.
Maybe we also.
Just a Word document.
Yeah.
We also bring that to special town meeting once it's printed and put it up somewhere.
Yeah. True. Full. Format, okay. So this is the station, but we'll keep the station, this will also be station number one.
Yeah.
Okay, so the yellow is station number one, they're slightly different color.
I just still have to print it out somewhere, right?
Okay, so then swimming pools, we need a better.
Do we really need to say it's swimming pool?
This swimming pool business.
I know, I think we should just pass over this. Well.
Well, I mean, do we?
I mean, it's a, if it, if it, if it all, it gives, gets us D B A buy-in.
Oh, I think it should be part of the, I think, I wonder if we spend time discussing.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, I think it's part of this, um, section one.
Hmm.
Okay. So we need to fix that, let's say. So then the section two. Is the general bylaw stuff. It's not Article Two anymore. I gotta fix that. I don't even know what number this is. Uh, maybe it's Article Two, so. That's like, that's a, there's actually a parameter to talk about what are general bylaws. Probably good to have the full zoning and the full general bylaws there. Just to print out.
We can definitely tell, look.
Right.
So we're talking about junk cars.
Right.
Curve cuts, stormwater management.
Backline, so. Had some paper.
You said we got a slide by the way, that background, there was a one.
One. Yeah. One full.
I just need that one.
Zone. And one channel. Okay. Okay, so. I think the general bylaws. Figure out that's a station. Um, I think Article Five Administration and Article Six. Um, they're about special permits, right? Those two things go together as a station. Right?
Which do we get?
Uh, twelve and six.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, so that's station number two is the section, the, um.
And we'll station Laura there.
Yes. So this station should probably have a, we should have these, should have a name. That'll be Laura, yeah, okay. And nonconforming use. Okay.
I mean, I don't wanna be a dishwasher. Uh, I don't.
I don't think, maybe we just. Okay, now make me three.
Well, let's see what happens tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, right.
So. But this is basically. This might be helpful to look at again, Chris.
Yeah, this is good, forgot about all this.
It's hard work. And the green will go away and the colors will go away, I'm just putting them so we can sort of figure out what section. But I think that sort of. Nonconforming use is a topic in and of itself.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
Yeah.
So it's changing from special permit to by right in certain instances, so there is some changes.
We actually added another, yeah. See that we change, this is, this is a change, but it's by right within the setback.
Four, three, the next two all.
This is wrong. Right? What we're saying is this is, should actually be the same thing. Right? That's what we just looked at, right, Chris? This is, this is uh, changes in use, special permit, it looks much, much of the neighborhood, it's the same thing.
Yeah, it is.
So. Um. Okay. That's one section. Okay, then we have adult entertainment, which.
I don't know.
Is a, which is a poster, I don't think anybody needs to.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Nobody appears.
Well, we have, so we have racing open this one.
I mean, yeah. Um. So residential conservation cluster. Um, we have some, a, like a nice. So if, any changes we make, the, we don't, any changes we make tomorrow night, we have to update these tables.
I don't think, none of the changes are gonna change the tables, I don't think.
I don't think so either, but.
Okay.
Okay, so, um.
So we're gonna have one big housing? We're to, we're gonna break these.
And then we have to break these out. I think we have to have these three, these three clustered together.
We don't have enough of them, so playing.
Well, people can go and stand at in front of a poster that says residential conservation cluster.
Oh, that's.
And it can be next to senior housing, and we can have two people staffing this.
Sure, that's. Yeah, that's right, that's right.
So this is, these are housing, these are.
They should all be changed.
Right.
So we changed that, go back to that cluster, the cluster, we changed this uh affordability one there, density bonus.
It doesn't, that's still in there, is it?
Yeah.
Oh, it is.
Yeah.
Right, well, we said this is a minimum of one, yeah, minimum of one, yeah, of one unit.
We didn't say, um. Right, isn't it? I mean, although we made, someone may propose to change that, who knows?
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna propose to change it tomorrow.
Okay, but that's what we have written off.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I think we have housing. Uh, senior housing, here's the senior housing post. I think we've changed that.
Yeah.
Um. So then we have ADUs, and this one we have changed quite a bit. I think we're, well. This table is wrong. So. Tax structure, allow for employees, this is not, this employee thing is not. Oh, yeah, that is, I mean, this is. Uh, this we haven't figured out yet.
Yeah, there, there's also the question whether this is two articles, right?
Right.
For how many of them have.
Uh.
But you will bring this up tomorrow, right?
Right, this has to get, but these are still the same thing.
Yeah, I don't think we've changed any of the policy.
Yeah, okay. So I'm not sure, do we? Do we need these rationale slides? I don't think we do.
This could be an article for the, for the rationale slide.
All people put out, you know, this. So I'm just thinking, if you print these all on, picture always on eleven by seventeen. Bunch of poster boards, and we just tape them on it, and I go on easels or, so we need some easels. Um. Should, one sitting right there. Should, one sitting right there.
I think, I think more than, uh, two, two, move to an easel, right, or what?
I'm thinking. Yeah, well, there's.
It's a lot of easels.
Like, this one doesn't need to be in big eleven by seventeen, the yellows, let me change the view here, just say this. So. Yellows all go together, they're one through four.
So they could be on one of those.
They could be on one or two, one poster board, cuz they're, uh, well, this one's gonna be on one big one, right?
Yeah, that's, I have a.
That's gonna be a big one, and the zoning map's gonna be.
Yeah, ten and eleven, you could probably remove from.
Right, but they'll be on big, we're gonna leave them for now, um, and then. Moves to the general bylaws. That's just pretty, that could go with adult entertainment.
Hmm.
This is pretty, um, I wanna put these.
Do you copy this whole city building?
Yeah.
Energy regulations.
We're not doing anything to energy regulations, these are, all we're talking about here is the changes.
Oh, thanks. Special regulation.
Do I need to work without too much?
Yeah, it works, it's, yeah, I can work for a minute, you want, please.
Send me that file number three there.
Yeah.
Along, if you can, copy it and send it, email it to me, I will get you something, maybe tonight or first thing in the day.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, me too, I guess.
Yeah, okay, um. So that's my, I think that can work, um, I think the messaging for Tiffany. We do have to get the board to buy in tomorrow night, so I'll sort of queue it up, and then once we hear it, get a buy-in from the board tomorrow night, I'll let it go. Is that it needs to be highlighted, it's drop in. But the crick, I'll do some for the cricket tonight, it says it's drop.
Is dropping the right word, I'm trying to think of a.
Come when you can during eight, seven to eight thirty.
Isn't that where open houses?
Open house.
Yeah, it's an open house format.
Dropping an open house, okay, same thing.
Yeah.
It's formal.
Formal. Okay.
We, we will have pulled it off if we've gotten a workshop done.
Well, the other thing is, is if it works well, and we get, I have people, we could run it again in November. We could run it again later in October, just by putting it on social media, and, um.
Okay.
If it, I mean, if we have all the material and.
So Tiffany's gonna put it on social media.
Yeah, she's gonna, yeah. So, all right, um, that was what we wanted to talk about tonight.
And the, uh, the website you said we, we were gonna talk about, but.
Website is this.
Okay, and, and the Chris's idea of maybe just having the, the open house in its own form.
Yeah, let's get the stuff together first.
Okay, no, no, I understand, that would go on some kind of website.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right, I have stuff to do tonight.
Meeting to adjourn.
Over to you, um.
Don't. This is a meeting for a fun for us.
So, let's see. Um, okay, thank you, um.
So, should I thank you, Sarah, this property rights thing, and then you posted your ownership?
You are closing.
Well, also, I have all the, uh, when I picked up these.